Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you. We thank you for our city. Now, Father, we decree and declare a spirit of wisdom that as we go forth to do this planning for our city, God, that we will please you not only ourselves, but not only man, but whatever we're doing, it will be pleasing to you. And, God, we ask your blessings upon our city. We salute that spirit of murder, and we speak peace now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Why don't you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cregmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Jesse here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hicks?
Here.
Commissioner Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. Are there any corrections or amendments from the August meeting? If not, they were staying as presented. We have three items on our public hearing today, and before we move into that, the developer of the resigning request, RZN 2022-007, conditional Ellis Farm has requested that this could be tabled for 30 days before going for a public hearing. I see there's a big audience today. Is everyone in the audience here in to speak to this issue of the Ellis Farm? Commissioners, we have a request from the developer to table this. I'm looking for a motion to either table it or move forward.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, this is going to be a very unpopular thing, but since there are proposed potential changes that the developer might be willing to offer to this thing, and in the interest of hearing what is going to actually be presented, I will make a motion to table this for 30 days.
Motion to table from Commissioner Rector.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Hicks. Can we do this with a voice? Vote all in favor? Discussion in the motion? I'm sorry. Let me understand.
Mr. Chairman, make sure I understand. So if we have the open the public hearing and hear both sides today, and then the public hearing is closed, and whatever decision we make, if there are some changes to the application in the next 30 days, how will we handle that at the next meeting? Let's just say for hypothetical that after the public hearing, we decide to table.
And now that that point, the developer and the proponents get together and they come up with a different proposal for the next meeting?
Right. I modify what we have in our packet today. So will we open the public hearing again, or the public hearing will be closed?
Probably will be closed.
And we will just hear what was amended if we table it. And would that come from staff or whatever, or that will come from the applicant who will tell us the changes?
Mr. Chairman, if I can answer that question, please. So there is not a process in the UDO for proffers to be amended before this body. So if there is a change, a significant change to the proffers from what you hear at this public hearing to what comes before you in 30 days, it would require another public hearing because the public would have to have a chance to speak on those new changes. In the UDO, it allows changes after this body makes this decision before City Council makes its final decision, and those can occur after the public hearing without a second public hearing. But there's not that same process in place in the UDO for this body. So it would require a second public hearing.
So if there are, make sure I understand, so between now and then, if there are any major changes or proper conditions, we would have to have another public hearing on the matter?
That's correct, if you close it. And I don't know how you could not close it because you would have, if you're going to hear from both sides.
Okay. Would that change things? Thank you.
So what I'm hearing is we could have the public hearing today and potentially have another public hearing in 30 days?
Yes, that's possible.
But it would only be triggered if there were significant changes to the, that would require re-advertising of the application?
So if there are changes to the proffered conditions, then that would trigger the need for another public hearing?
Hearing the attorney, Commissioner Hicks?
I guess my problem is the developers have requested that we table it, meaning that they have something else to offer, or they have some other discussions, and that would impact significantly. I don't care what it is. It would still impact on what we hear and what these people hear. So to me, for us to do a public hearing today before the citizens get to know what the final product or the product that we're supposed to be acting on looks like seems kind of a mute state. I would see, it would seem to me that we would have that one public hearing once the developer is done and has had all the conversation that he wants to have with the community, and then we come back and do a presentation that is, it just kind of makes sense to everybody.
That was my point. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one thing. Well, I asked it, I asked the question because I thought we closed the public hearing. If there were changes, we would just see the amended, and the public hearing would be closed. But now that I know if we table this and it goes back to the community and the developer makes significant changes to the proffers, what we're dealing with is a whole new application. And I do totally agree with what you're saying. The public should hear the final information, and if we see we're in the process of getting final information, that's what the public should hear, and that was your vote on. So I totally agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. Today, we were greeted with this telephone book full of information that was on our desk. I have not had, nor has anyone else here, had an opportunity to review these documents. So therefore, my vote would be to table it so that we would have adequate time to be able to digest this information prior to a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, based off all information up here, I call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Let's do this with electronically. It's been ruined the voice, but the other votes along the roll.
Yes, sir. All right, Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Cregmore?
It's not taking the vote.
Broke it.
Oh, okay. It's the electronics. I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're sorry you came out today to hear a public hearing, but the public hearing would be tabled for 30 days, and it'll be at our October meeting. We will have a public hearing after the developer and the public had a chance to have meetings, and the developer will bring a new proposal back for us to work on, and then we will have a public hearing next month. Thanks for your attendance. We now have two items on our public hearing. We'll let the audience.
Jesus.
Mr. Chairman, we still have a planning commission in session. Please leave quietly.
Thank you, Officer Jackson. We will now open the public hearing. We have two items on our agenda. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. The first item on our agenda for a public hearing today would be exception request, EX, CEX 2022-010-5071-South Link Circle. Ms. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is exception request, CEX 2022-010-5071-South Link Circle, submitted by Robert Kellum, P.E. of Kellum-Gurwitz, Inc., agent on behalf of Matthew Beckwith, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Tasha Beckwith, property owner, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a detached garage and patio to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 5071-South Link Circle, zoning map 6B*Y*4, parcel 24*25. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, Zoned PD Plan Development Overlay Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Northern Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 5071-South Link Circle, CEX 2022-010. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present our report.
Thank you. As stated, this exception request is to permit the construction of a detached garage, recreational space, and porous paver patio to encroach within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer. The maps for this application have been updated to correct an error in our GIS system. That map was provided to you all at your seats prior to this meeting. However, it does not materially affect the application, and the updated map will be included as an attached exhibit to the resolution. Additionally, staff did discover that on the cover sheet of staff's report to you all, the listed improvements to go to encroach within the buffer were listed incorrectly. So just for clarification purposes, this is for the construction of a detached garage, recreational space, and porous paver patio only. The subject property is Zoned PD Plan Development Overlay District and is a part of the South Village of Harborview Subdivision. The property was originally plotted as two separate parcels, lots 24 and 25, in 1998 with a reduced buffer of 50 feet. The property owner desired to construct additional improvements and therefore needed to vacate the property line that separated lots 24 and 25. As a result of that property line vacation, the parcel then became subject to the full 100-foot buffer. The subject property is approximately 3 1/2 acres in size and currently features a single-family dwelling, detached frame garage, pool, attached screen porch, concrete drive, and patio. The existing dwelling and other improvements were constructed prior to the parcel being subject to the full 100-foot buffer and thus did not require an exception request. The applicant is proposing to remove 381 square feet of existing impervious cover within the buffer and construct an approximately 600-square-foot detached garage, recreational space, and approximately 1,600 square feet of porous pavers. The total amount of proposed additional impervious cover to be placed within the buffer is 1,830 square feet. The proposed porous pavers have been included as a part of the total proposed impervious cover for calculations for mitigation purposes. However, the porous pavers have been designed to be a permeable surface, as water is able to infiltrate the gaps between the pavers and is stored until it is filtered back into the soil. The porous pavers will act as a best management practice in order to reduce the amount of runoff generated from the existing and proposed impervious cover, as well as to slow the rate of runoff. The applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan for the full limit of disturbance, which shows the installation of various types of vegetation to include shrubs and trees. The applicant has stated that one 4-inch caliper tree is to be removed and replaced as a part of this request. Additionally, the existing vegetation within the mulch beds are to be relocated and replanted. In order to mitigate for the 1,830 square feet of disturbance, the applicant is proposing to plant five units of vegetation back within the buffer as recommended by the Riparian Buffer Mitigation and Modification Guidance Manual. Section 31-415, subsection F5 of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District provides review criteria when reviewing exception requests. I will touch on a few of those, however, each one is addressed in staff's report. Granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance to other property owners in the Preservation Area District. The applicant is proposing to offset the land disturbance within the RPA buffer associated with the construction of the detached garage, recreational space, and porous pavers. The applicant has also proposed to construct porous pavers in order to reduce the amount of runoff generated by the existing and proposed impervious cover. Therefore, no special privileges are being granted as a part of this request. Additionally, it is important to note that the property line vacation in 2020 resulted in this parcel being the only parcel within the surrounding area that is subject to the full 100-foot buffer. The exception request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. During the review of this application, the applicant worked with staff to revise the scope of their application to remove the impervious cover that was desired for a hot tub, fire pit, outdoor kitchen, and outdoor shower, as these are accessory structures that are not typically considered the minimum necessary to afford relief and allow enjoyment of the rear yards. Based on the reduced scope in which they proposed 1,830 square feet of disturbance for the garage and patio, we will, as well as the use of the porous pavers, these are considered reasonable improvements to allow relief. Staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415, subsection F5C of the UDO, to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request, CEX 2022-010. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
I'm Robert Kellum, the agent for the applicant. Before, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have concerning this application. But before I take any questions, I'd like to thank staff in working with my client myself to get this application where it could be heard. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have concerning this application. Really don't have anything to add to what the lady already said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kellum. If anyone here would like to speak in opposition? Seeing or hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve CEX 2020-010 with conditions.
Motion for Mr. Cregmore?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Eberwine. Any discussion in the motion? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. And Mr. Kellum, you can notify Mr. Beckwith and Mrs. Beckwith that there's no other further action required by this body. The next item on our agenda is the Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-002 Minor Subdivision. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-002 Minor Subdivisions, initiated by the City of Suffolk for Amendments to the Code, the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31. Thank you. Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, subdivision, section 31, 506A, 2A, minor subdivision, appendix A, definitions and appendix B submission requirements, B9, final plats and site plans or site plans. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance due to a change in circumstances. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-005. So I will present a briefing on this. This is an item that we've had a public hearing on previously. Just to offer some background, additionally, the committee on ordinances received a briefing on this item, as did the Planning Commission last month, to get some greater details on the history as it relates to this particular provision. But in a nutshell, I'm going to roll through these real quick. So an issue that we have at hand is, this is an opportunity for clarification. It's currently, it's not going to change how we regulate minor subdivisions in the City of Suffolk. It's not going to modify the amount of cuts available to developers as it relates to the minor subdivision process. But what it does is offer some clarification to the decision maker, which is the Director of Planning and Community Development, as it relates to the approval of minor subdivision plats. Previously, there were a number of plats that were approved not in alignment with Unified Development Ordinance due to interpretations made. This will kind of patch those, that area given to Director as it comes to interpreting this. But the issue that we had, so subdivision cuts currently, and they will remain, are limited to the parent track only, as it existed on property prior to March 1, 1970. So the first part of this ordinance is to define parent track in Exhibit B right now. That is not defined. Secondly, the existing language in this code section could benefit from clarity as it pertains to reinforcing the intent of the minor subdivision review and approval process. So we've added some language to Section 31-506, clearly outlining that first bullet point. So subdivision cuts are limited, and they must be located on the parent track as it existed in 1970. The last part of this, those are the two clarifying points of this ordinance. The last actually is a change, but it's not a terribly significant change. This is something that will certainly make lives of certainly the development community and property owner community easier as it would for planning staff when it comes to reviewing minor subdivisions. But we're borrowing some language from our family transfer section of the subdivision ordinance and requiring a full title report for minor subdivisions. And that's important because it would outline the subdivision history of the property primarily since 1970. If there's no subdivision history after 1970, it's kind of a moot point. But in order to determine whether cuts are available, we need to have a clear understanding of when and how many times the property has been cut. Right now, we do require a letter of title opinion, but it would be far more helpful for us to have exhibits associated with a full title report. So that's what this change kind of encapsulates, and I touched on it here, or on the previous slide, but the first would be to define parent track. As proposed, we would define parent track in Appendix B of the Unified Development Ordinance as a lot or parcel of land legally established prior to March 1, 1970, of which a plat or legal description is recorded in the Circuit Court Clerk's office. Pretty straightforward there. The second part of this would just be adding a subsection in Article 5 of the UDO, which covers subdivision regulations. But we would specify that new lots created in accordance with this ordinance must be located within the physical boundaries of their associated parent track as it existed on March 1, 1970. Once again, this is an opportunity for clarification. It does not change how we handle the subdivision process. It will not change how we handle the subdivision process with or without this change, but it will hopefully correct in the future any potential misinterpretation of the code. Lastly, this is the section of the ordinance that would specify the need for a full title report. Once again, this is language that is largely borrowed from our family transfer regulations. As for family transfers throughout the city, we do require a full title report. That kind of concludes staff's presentation on this. After the close of the public hearing, I will be more than glad to answer any questions you have as it relates to this Ordinance Text Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. I will now open the public hearing. And is there any additional staff reports for proponents? Hearing none. And I see someone in the audience raring to get to the podium, so we will move to the If you're in opposition, come up, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jesse Johnson. I'm an attorney here in Suffolk. My office is at 3508 Robbs Drive, and I attended, on behalf of a number of clients, the hearing that you had on the ordinance a couple of months ago. We understand that there's been some activity, perhaps a closed meeting that was held, perhaps on this issue, I don't know, but it's now come back up. And my clients, which includes a number of farmers who own land in the city, a number of people who are in the real estate business, who do minor subdivisions, are impacted by this because, if you'll recall, one of the questions was, how does this impact a boundary line adjustment? Well, it's clear that the modification to the ordinance will totally preclude creating another lot or two as a result of a boundary line adjustment. A boundary line adjustment is basically a situation, if you have a surplus piece of land, you add it to another piece, you get the same tax number, and then you might get an extra lot or two somewhere. It's not guaranteed. It's effective when you have a situation where you have a leftover parcel, you don't have a significant frontage or a proper frontage to create 150-foot lot. That happens, but it's extremely rare that it does happen. Now, I think a little bit of history is important here. For many, many years, the planning department has not included the boundary line adjustment prohibition in their research and in their consideration in moving forward with these I can count a number of times, and I wish Wayne Courtney were here, he's a surveyor who does a lot of work in the rural community. He can tell you how many boundary line adjustments were done. It's been a number, but nothing approaching 300 lots is something that you were about to hear. So yes, it does happen. We are concerned about why it's certainly, it's certainly suddenly become a big issue. We don't quite understand it. We hear, well, you're taking property out of agricultural use. Oh, my goodness. Well, this body may well have voted affirmatively to recommend approval of the 540 acres up there on Kings Fork Road and pitch kettle. 540 acres rezoned and, or recommended rezoning, take it out of agricultural. What we talk about here is a couple of acres, not 540, the one that was going to come before you today. Whatever you do to resolve that issue, you've still got the possibility of rezoning agricultural property to residential use, and you may create 300 lots. And not only that, you may have an exit and an entry entering on the property from a cart path. So we don't see the consistency here. Why does the city want to make these changes that might preclude a lot or two? Let's look at circumstances here. You've got farmers who rely on using their property. Sometimes they have to to sell lots. What's another lot or two? Take this year. We're nine or 10 inches down in rain. We might have some farmers who are in real trouble. What are they going to do? We don't know how much the government can help them. Most of the time, they just have to help themselves. You're taking away a valuable tool that they can use when they You're taking away a valuable tool that they can use when they need to. So, now, the other issue that, that I'm running into is that applications have been denied by the planning department based on this change that is not part of the code. So what they want to do is bootstrap themselves into this situation. Now, is that fair to those applicants that, that in good faith made these applications? And in some instances, the applicants were schooled by prior planning commission employees on how to do a boundary line adjustment. And now, we're going to say, well, we're, we're not going to approve it, we're going to deny it, and we'll modify the ordinance, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. Well, a couple of questions come to mind. If the ordinance is good enough to deny it back in February, or March, or April, why do you need to change it? If you, if you're that 100% sure that the ordinance says what it says? Well, I believe the ordinance leaves plenty of room, and that's why this loophole, if you call it that, is trying to be closed. So if, if you, as a policy board, and you are, you know, want to not see the forest for the trees, then that's your business. But I think it's vitally important that you give some consideration to the people out in the, in the outlying parts of the city, where they, where the farmers or other landowners can maybe have a chance to take a piece of property that's landlocked and use it. And they're not building warehouses on it, they're not building multifamily homes on it, they're building single-family homes, and some of them have great value. You know, you convert property from land use, the taxes are miniscule. You put a home on it, you get fair market value on that lot together with that improvement. So there's, there's good income. We just see this as a situation where it is unnecessary and actually unfair to the little people out here. You know, it, it's fine if you're a developer, you've got pockets full of money, you can come in and build all these structures and make all this money, but you've got people out here that live in hand to mouth that could use this. We don't know why the city wants to take it away. You know, you may have heard, well, that's been what, that's, that's how we've interpreted since 2007, 2008. Well, according to the information I got from the clerk's office, there was a lawsuit, Brooks versus the City of Suffolk. That case didn't turn on this issue at all. That case turned on a couple of issues. One, the plat wasn't signed appropriately. And two, the big issue seemed to have been contiguous property, which is not an issue here. Contiguous property, obviously, is a situation where you have property on either side of a road, it's owned by the same person, if it adjoins on the same side of the road, it's still contiguous property. That was, that was the case. That was what sealed that case. And I understand that wants to be cited to you as precedent in making this change. And I think a fair reading of the information in that case would point that out. So we'd ask you to consider this, we'd ask you not to approve this change. I can tell you this, I've made several attempts myself to speak to council members, to speak to other people, to try to sit down and say, okay, let's talk about it. Okay? We would love to do that, but we can't seem to get any response from anybody about talking about this particular situation. Now, we believe we should be treated just like everybody else who comes up here and says, we'd like to talk. You know, once this ordinance is done, the only recourse we have is, is to go to the courts. Now, I doubt if we'd have a great deal of success there, but it's fundamentally unfair. So we'd ask you, number one, don't recommend approval. If you, if you feel like you can table it, please do, and give us a chance to talk with the planning people, give us a chance to talk with the city attorney's office, to see where we can go with this thing. You know, you, you can solve problems a little easier if you can get face to face and let people understand a little bit about what's going on. It's easy to say, oh, there's traffic out there. Well, there's traffic everywhere. And, and you've got traffic with combines and tractors and everything else, and some people that move out into the country, for some reason, they don't understand that. I, I was talking with a guy the other day, he says, well, I don't like it out there anymore because I have, I get behind tractors and I get stuck. I said, well, where'd you come from? And he said, Virginia Beach. I said, you ever get stuck behind a bus? Well, yeah, I did. Well, you know, there are minor inconveniences everywhere in life, and it's, it's up to us to try to figure out how, how we can best cope with them. We see this as, as a change that doesn't need to happen. In fact, I wish we could codify the change so that everybody would understand that, yes, these, these boundary line adjustments should be a part of a minor subdivision. And there may be some common ground there between what the city's position is and what our position is. We'd very much like to explore it. Gentlemen, that's all I have to say. Gentlemen and ladies, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if you have them, but I, I don't know what else I can say. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this request? Here and then? Mr. Wine, do you have any rebuttal?
Not necessarily from the, the city's side. We've, we've had ongoing discussions with the development community on this, so that, so that they understand the perspective that we're bringing with this ordinance text amendment. Once again, this codification of this will not change the way we interpret the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to minor subdivisions. This does not eliminate one's ability to do a boundary line adjustment. That's not regulated by the City of Suffolk, that's regulated by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And, and property owners will still have the right to modify their, their property lines, provided that, you know, the resulting properties meet, meet our code requirements. So those will not be impacted at all. But like, like I said, this ordinance text amendment allows an opportunity for clarification so that the development community can look at our Unified Development Ordinance and understand what is approvable versus what is not. We have the date of applicability in March 1st, 1970, which states, you know, the parent track has afforded so many cuts, and those cuts must be located on that parent track. If not, they, they don't comply with, with that date of applicability. So that, that is what we're hoping to solve, we're hoping to be more transparent and with this ordinance text amendment, and we believe that the clarification accomplishes that.
Mr. Wine? We'll now close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, before there's a motion, I need to point out something. There is a, a couple of typos in the resolution that was presented to the Commission, so if you are inclined to adopt it, these amendments need to be made. In the title, it talks about Section 31-506A2A. It should actually be 506A, um, B2A. And the same with the title for Exhibit B, again, says 31-506A2A. It should be 31-506B2A. And then finally, on the actual amendment of the code itself, in the Appendix, Section B9, again, it has 31-506A2A, it should be 31-506B2A. So if, if the planning commission does want to pass this change, I would recommend that those revisions be made as well.
Those changes one more time?
Sure. So on the title of the resolution itself, it is, it talks about subdivision Section 31-506A2A. It should actually read 31-506B2A. On the title for Exhibit B, it has, again, 36, 31-506A2A. It should be changed to 31-506B2A. And then in Appendix B, Section B9F, it also says, for minor subdivision plats as outlined by Section 31-506A2A, it should actually be 31-506B2A.
The commissioners with those changes?
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of O2A, OTA 2022-002, with the two, three spots where we say A2A being changed to B2A.
Commissioner Hickson? Second, Commissioner Harwoodson. Mr. Wine, will you call for the vote, please? And any other discussion in the motion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll go to City Council on October 19th, and have another opportunity to voice your opinion. Do we have any old business to be addressed?
Yes, sir.
Under the new business, A, the appointment for the fiscal year 2024-2033, the Capital Improvement Plan Subcommittee. I've spoken with Commissioner Eberwine and Commissioners Cretemore, and they have agreed to represent the planning commission on that committee. Can we have a status report, Mr. Wine, from the August 17th meeting?
Yes, sir. Can I get to that one moment? So the following items went before City Council on their August 17th, 2022 meeting. The first being the rezoning, RZN 2021-020, conditional, that is Port 460 Logistics. That was tabled for 30 days and will be reconsidered by the City Council tomorrow evening. Rezoning request, RZN 2022-005, conditional, this is the Glenwood subdivision for property there on White Marsh, that was approved with the proffers. RZN 2022-006, Linwood, that is Turlington Road rezoning, originally part of Millstone, that was approved with the proffered conditions. Conditional use permit, CUP 2021-013, Shady Pine Borough Pit, that was tabled by, at the request of the applicant until November 16th. And ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-003, exception request for fences, was approved by City Council. And conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-012, this is the Blue Point Live Entertainment, that was approved with conditions.
Do we have preliminary plat approval?
We do, we do have one. This kind of goes back to a rezoning recently that you all considered for Hillpoint, but this is a preliminary plat, PSB 2022-0001, what is being labeled River Highlands Phase III. This is a plat that was approved administratively by staff in August. It's a proposed subdivision that's located within the PD Plan Development Overlay zoning District in Hillpoint. It will contain 69 detached, single-family residential lots. And the parent parcel, Tax Map 26F Parcel S*6, contains 35 acres, of which about 11 acres or so are located within critical areas, leaving 23 acres or so developable. This stems from the rezoning for the Hillpoint Golf Course that you all considered in 20, as part of RZN 2021-008, conditional, which would allow for additional dwellings within Hillpoint, still maintaining, I believe, 1,813 units total, being the maximum there. The density will be about four units per acre, and there will be 20 acres of open space associated with it. So that is, that is the only preliminary plat that was approved during the month.
Hey, we're getting preliminary plats for a change. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, is comments from the commissioners. Have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite everyone to a Hampton Roads Radio Control Club event that will be held on Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to 1:00. Yours truly is in charge of the event, so I welcome you, each one of you there. This is a, I think it's the 18th consecutive year we've held this. We've raised close to $30,000 for the local Toys for Tots program here that's distributed now by the Salvation Army. We have probably raised, oh, gosh, 40, 50 boxes, big boxes of, of new toys, as, as well as the cash. We start off about 9:00 in the morning, it's, it's at our field on Lone Star Lakes, which is off of Pembroke Lane. We welcome the public, bring the kiddies or grand kiddies. We will have a, I call it a drop-in by Skydive Suffolk. They've done this for us for the last several years, and they, they come in probably around 11:30, they will drop down, they, if they are like they have been doing in past years, they will be dressed as a Santa Claus with a bag of toys, the Grinch, and elves, along with some others, in outfits. The kids get a real big kick out of it, and the adults kind of like it, too. We will also have what's called a candy drop, where a radio-controlled airplane goes up, it's got a trap door in it, and we let the kids kind of stand on the sideline, they sweep down, drop candy, and then we let the kids run out and, and get a handful of candy. We actually have radio-controlled combat, if you can believe that. There'll be some little flying, electric flying wings with some crepe paper on them, and they get out there and mix it up. And we've had as many as 10, 11 out there at the same time. That's quite exciting because a lot of times they miss the crepe paper and, and hit each other. So it's, it's a lot of fun to watch, and it's a good time out. We ask people to bring a new toy, or make a little cash donation to the project. Salvation Army will be out there about 1:00 to pick up the toys and stuff. But it's a good day out, y'all can pray for us to have good, good weather, because obviously none of this goes on without some sunshine. So once again, it's a good day out. Like I say, it's good for the kiddies. Sometimes we will even have a, a couple of planes with what we call a buddy box, where you can, we've flown as many as 30 kids, where we let them actually fly the plane. And you'll have a qualified pilot that, that's on the control, and with a little switch, he can cut it off when they get in trouble. Just to give you an example of that, there are trees out there, and at one time, the last time I did it as a pilot, we have an assistant there with us that's helping the child. And so a lot of times when you, you say, okay, it's nice and level, okay, it's all yours, and you let the child have this plane, and they'll fly along, and then they get in trouble real quick, and you can release this little knob on the switch and get it back, so you can control it and get it out of trouble. Well, I'd been doing that off, off probably 30, 40 minutes, and I had this young, young boy, and when I gave it to him, he made the prettiest turns you've ever seen in your life. So I'm thinking, okay, relax, he's got this. And so he flies across, he makes a turn over top of this big tree, and he's doing real well, and then all of a sudden, he just overcorrected, went behind the tree. By the time this old geezer was able to let off the thing, went behind the tree. Well, when you've flown them for a while, you just give full up and pray when something like that happens. And all of a sudden, between two great big trees, this plane comes flying through. And the boy that was helping me looks over and says, if I hadn't seen that one, I would have never believed that. But it's a lot of fun, it's a good day out, and I would invite each and every one of you to come. Like I said, it's at, it's on Lone Star Lakes Park. come. Like I said, it's at, it's on Lone Star Lakes Park. Thank the city for participating. We've been there for 30 years. And to get there, this turn right on Pembroke Lane, as you're going into Chucka Tuck, go down about a mile and a half on the left, and you'll see our field. Just come out, and you'll see me out there running around. One chance in my, each year that I get to be the boss, because I don't have that option at home anymore. So, anyway, y'all come on out and see us.
Is the date again October?
Uh, 15th of October, Saturday, 15th of October. It's the week after Peanut Fest, I believe.
Mr. Johnson, we super quick. I just want to extend my condolences publicly to former City Councilman, Enoch Copeland, and the pastor and his wife, Jean. If anybody knew Miss Jean Copeland, you knew how much she taught and worked in the community of the City of Suffolk. And also, one of my favorite substitute teachers when I was in school, past recently, Miss Virgie Sanderford, who was a real good friend of mine, and I was sorely missed. Last note, I'm gonna tell a real quick story. 14 years ago, my sister came home with a dog. And I was not too happy with the dog, because, you know, usually, you know, we growing up in city, you know, you know, this was before tethering was illegal. Now, you had dog outside. But it was a little small box of terrier, man, and she wanted them inside. And that was, that was, that was a little, 14 years later, man, I really fell in love with the little guy. I really did, man. So I want to send condolences to my sister. Her box of terrier by the name of Oriole died on Sunday. And it's just been sad around the house, man. So I want to send condolences out to my sister. And I appreciate y'all letting me say that real quick.
Mr. Hyde?
Mr. Chairman?
Um, I'm not sure who is responsible for it, but I'm looking forward to our outing with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation on Friday, to cruise up and down the river and learn a lot more about that ecosystem. And hopefully, we'll learn some stuff that maybe we could apply to the Nansman River here out here in Suffolk. And then also, if anybody attended the Taste of Suffolk last Saturday, or Saturday before last, that was a great event. It was a beautiful day. It was well-attended. The food was good. The bands were good. And, you know, by and large, it was a hugely successful event. And I thank, you know, the Suffolk Parks and Recreation people for putting it on.
Any other comments? Here or none? Meeting is adjourned.